All main order please. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can turn your volume down.
Alright. We'll call please.
President Dowd.
Here.
Best president ever.
We know he's here.
President Zimmerman. Thank you, Azar.
Here.
Tracy Leahy.
Here.
Tracy Zerri.
Here.
Tracy Deller.
Here.
Hey, thank you. Move on to 4.0, public contest number one. Is anybody out there?
There is not.
Anybody here? Like spot. Okay. Great. On to presentation. Next meeting.
Tonight.
Great, so we're gonna go to 6.1. Review of the regular meeting agenda. What's on agenda especially, any question on that?
Just one at the end of the table. Alrighty, the one about donated farm equipment. Go to some group, just get an old background on that.
About that. Probably 15 years ago, give or take, I don't remember the exact date. Just triggered purchase of each property in the Hollows area. It's an addition of the Hollows called each property. And the individual that lived there had quite a collection of old farm equipment and things like that. At that point in time, back 15 years ago, we were envisioning some kind of a farm museum or something like that, maybe at the McConnell area, et cetera. But we have, obviously, in the last few years, way from those kinds of concepts. And the, we used a lot of it. We incorporated half a dozen items or so, smaller items into the powers walker and the programming that we do there. The items that we can't use are these big items. There are wagons and their brushing machine, you know, these very large items. So we went through the process to try to figure out if anybody locally wanted those. First of all, we went to family, said, look, you donated these to us. We can't use them. In good faith, you don't feel like selling them? You know, do you want them back? And they said, no, we don't want them back. But they did request to know where they actually want them. And so I said, okay, we certainly do that. And in that conversation, and in that conversation, Harry Page's nephew mentioned to me that there was a, that this Rock River Brushery place that had a large ground, they had a great show and things like that. And he indicated that Harry had actually gone to it or had been to it, using steam show. So we went through a process, or I went through a process where I tried to find, and the historical society reached out to them, I wrote, reached out to, there's a, there's an antique farm equipment group that's associated, I think, with Farm Bureau somehow. Reached out to them, they didn't, they couldn't take those items. Said they might have members that would be interested in buying them for auction. And so I said, okay, you put them on the auction, I'll certainly let you know. And last ditch effort was reached out to this Rock River Brushery and they came down, met with Ben, Oday and I out on site. Seems like that was March, maybe. Looked at those things and were interested in a couple of items, but said he wanted to talk to us first. Talked to his board, he said, look, we'll take it all. Take all the items that you have there, including this big wooden brushing machine. And so we feel that that is a, kind of ending up, I guess, in some respects, in the spirit and intent of what maybe Harry would have wanted anyway. You know, in some place that will put them in a show or something like that. So they will come down and pick them up. Guys approve it.
Sounds fantastic.
Yeah, so yeah, I feel, I feel really good about this. I didn't figure this would be the outcome. I thought we would have them on the auction, maybe hither and yon out there. But I could go back to Adrian now, and Adrian then going to the Rock River Brushery. So we, I think they have a once a year show, Labor Day weekend or something like that. Thanks, appreciate it.
On the grazing lease, Dave.
Yes.
Where's that property that we're at?
Compton, unofficial conservation area. And Compton Prairie is the conservation area that's currently outside.
Okay.
This is the one that we did the prairie construction on last year. And then long term would be to see if we can graze on that native grassland.
So we have to build a fence or that?
Don't be part of.
Are you?
Okay. And that's also linked into that grant. And so we're also seeking funding to add some native cool season grass as well, just to provide a better forest and extended grazing period for National Future Native Grazers.
Nice. John, on the fell pro stuff, I mean, it's all seems like.
Yes, there were a couple of items. As you know, whenever you go into rehabbing anything, you're gonna run into, especially coming around. Initially, they ran into an issue with realizing that the urinals were cracked. Caught that right away and, and those were, we were able to replace, I think it's like three or something like that. And then the next thing they ran into were, we recognized that some additional changes needed to happen to secure, rather than, rather than post-plastic to copper to, to, you know, old pipe and whatnot. Let's, let's, let's do a lot, let's do a little bit of this. It's almost really the, where the change.
Got it, good. And how about with the hollows, is that gonna be wrapped up and ready to go?
They paved yesterday, I think the paving is finished. I saw a report come through this morning, this afternoon, that they're, they're doing the, you know, the seeding and the matting and all of those things. It's, it's, it will be done, it's just a matter of, you know, it isn't gonna be beautiful and flowers and all that. Sorry, it'll look like a project that recently concluded.
Good, good. Is that lake as low as it sounds?
It is.
Oh. Alright, thank you. Anybody else have any question? Yes, otherwise, the mitigation banking, that's resting all okay?
Yes, so this would be an addendum to the mitigation banking instrument, which previously said that before there would be any credits released, we needed to be hydrology for two consecutive years. And as you're probably aware, in the past five years, it had a wet year, dry year, wet year, dry year. And not been able to get that back to back consecutive. But two years ago, we started to begin the interim vegetation performance, which used to be the threshold for having additional credit release towards the hydrology. Anyway, since we've been meeting that interim vegetation or said that we could have that additional release because we are meeting that performance, we're actually getting close to the final vegetation performance. So we're gonna be in a well and determination to figure out how many welllands acres we've made. This would allow for an additional lease of credits that we would be able to sell on the market because we've met those higher vegetation performance.
You know. Alright, that's all I got as far as on the agenda for a regular meeting. It's like 6.2, we need authorization to go for RFQs toward the 2040.
Yes, so we just wanted to frame this up and kind of call this out. And we have this item under other board business for Tuesday. And John has been tapped to be a project lead on this and has worked collaboratively with the team to get specifications. So that has, that is attached to your packet of information. So that probably gives you a little bit more of a look of what we're looking for. And this is a request for qualifications. Once that's vetted, then proposals will be entertained from groups that are selected. Of course, the board will see that before we go back out. Anything else that you wanna highlight on this initiative?
Only thing is, you know, this is really the first stage of it. We're going out there, we're trying, trying to put together a document that would, that would cast a white net out there to bring us the best quality consultants that we possibly could get. And so we were not, we tried to be broad about it, but enough detail so they knew exactly what they were getting into. The next stage of this, as Elizabeth said, is we'll, we'll be putting it out on the street. If you guys approve, we'll put it out on the street. It'll be out there till the end of June, basically. We will use July and early August to make our finer finer selection. And then come back in that process. I think September is the timeframe to be coming back with a contract. So that's only the timeframe and then it'll kick off fall. Figuring right now, we're roughly figuring about an 18 month process, maybe 15 months, that we can have that thing finalized up. But that's gonna depend a lot on the consultant. Once we have a con, once we have a con, you know, a selected consultant, we can have that conversation. It kind of narrow that out.
We envision, I know the county today, because I was in the presentation, where you had the, they had their 20 to 50. And so there are other plans and that kind of took various plans, looking at land use from municipalities. We'll obviously use some data points that the county has put together as they look to putting this together. And we had, we were talking before as a 10 year plan. And then as we got thinking and this, like, the dates of this is kind of odd. So staff are very creative, they said, oh, this has been forward to 2040, let's just round it. And then this vision out to 2071, which is the district's centennial. So again, looking that long range, which is way out there. But really, this is gonna give us what's in the immediate front of us, you know, in the short term to 2040. And then we'll be able to pull out the priorities. And there'll be, you know, the consultants will be selected. And we're looking that they do some type of survey assessment, focus groups, participation of the community. Is getting their input, thoughts and needs and what are the district's priorities going forward is key. You know, in being that both on the public environment, a built environment of all the projects, buildings, sites that we'll talk a little bit about, what needs to be updated, but as well as conservation planning, preparing us for, to ensure we're resilient, climate, burn and then our education programs and outreach. So it will be a lovely comprehensive piece that will guide the district. Future boards, your staff, right, that role now.
I thought it was very interesting today. They did a really good job and they incorporated conservation. They, they have talked so much things about conservation industry. How lucky we really are, you know. So yeah, use their information as much as possible since you're very good.
Okay, Elizabeth, you want to talk a little about the town, Austin?
I do, I know I had updated the board when we received the announcement. And I just wanted to again, bring it to the surface here so everybody was well aware. I mean, we've met the historical community on various fronts and discussions just prior to share what we had been doing prior to the proposition on investments and what we've been taking care of. The group did reach out to Landmarks Illinois to look to have it designated as one of the most endangered places for 2025. So there's a top 10 list. It brings awareness to the community that this property is in need of funding here. It doesn't come itself with any funding directly related to the designation. This is the second property now that the district has that's on the Landmarks Illinois. Our Campbell Gangwood Fox Glove was also placed many years ago on the most endangered list. And of course, I had to get funding to be able to move that project forward. So I just bring this forward. There is, I know, some requests by the community localized about that particular property to get access to McConnell. There is an event that's taking place across the street. The district that side is not open to the public for various reasons, for safety. And in this case, this project among the many others that the district has that needs to fall in, my recommendation to the board is that it goes through this comprehensive planning process with all the needs and wants that are out there that we are very much aware of, district wide, as of not having the resources and funding. And so there's a need to move forward with funding, planning and how we build that capital asset, maintenance of sites, that that's all taken into consideration as part of the process. So that's my recommendation, the board needs something different. But it's just, I want to make you aware that this is out there.
Well, yeah, I feel that it's sort of, a lot of people look at it, you don't put on that list, it's a negative thing. But it's really a positive, so maybe positive, hopefully, the resources of heaven will pop up from home. A lot of times, we get a lot of pressure from the outside and we're not doing enough, so.
Do we have like an estimate or like a property condition report?
We have in the past, that's something John could talk about. We've looked at it several times. John, a little bit of your input on that.
Going from memory, I think we've had a couple of presentations to the board, that's probably before your time.
Yeah.
So.
We even had where they were gonna come and move a building.
Yes, we, yeah, we had. So there've been lots of assessments on the structure up there. There are, I, I think the number is nine buildings there. Two of them are, are stable, good roofs on them, you know, the, the outside is not getting in. So the house is that way, the chicken coop is in good shape. Most of the other ones need significant resources. I don't have a number off the top of my head, if I had that report sitting in front of me. What I can do though, I can certainly supply that report to you because it was done less than two years ago.
I'd say two, probably two.
There you go, so.
Or just, yeah, I don't remember the number either, but just recently, the art history, they had with refurbishing or work to refurbish the barn on Barlina, the art history going to Crystal Lake. And that barn is small. You know, the barn at McConnell is a T shaped barn, so this barn has maybe 25% of the size of the cattle barn. And the number that I recall from the newspaper article was 440,000 for that. So I'm, you know, it's a heavy million up to million and a half.
And we've done extensive stuffs in the house.
Yes, house is in very good shape. Just painted it and yeah. We painted on it last fall, we worked both with some staff and some contractors doing window repairs and whatnot. I feel really good about the house, house is in great shape. And the chicken coop, good roof on it, needs paint. And but other than that, that one's in good shape. Brainerd needs a roof, you know, and that would be, that would stabilize that one significantly. The large barns, they're very, very hard. I, numbers of hundreds of thousands of dollars just on that.
Roofs are gonna be okay still.
I can't think of any other factoids I can give you about it. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Big chat. I see the McConnell Foundation group is fairly active, very vocal. They've had several fundraisers. We've tried to work with.
A couple of years ago, they came and made a presentation and they're working with us. But to me, then, you know, I think I saw four articles, sort of threw mud at us, it seemed to me, so.
I wasn't gonna say that. They're vocal.
Were they dairy barns or what was in, cattle dairy or?
At the time, it was a dairy barn.
Dairy barn.
Well, rather than, so. The McConnell family came into the area and was able to give the sons four, each of the four sons, these property. But there's a lot of historical value.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of barns around the same.
And when this board approved the master plan, they had reopened it, but there was a caveat on the group that was seated at the time that, again, different group that was the foundation and support that they would raise the funds will at least get some, some good head start into helping to match and it never materialized and to raise them. So the district has invested in, as we've grown, based on the house.
Yeah, as you know, people will look at our budget and say, well, they have a lot of money in there. And why can't you put some money towards the project like that? As you know, it's cheap, so. Good, thank you. Elizabeth, anything else then?
I do, I have several things that are not on the agenda, but I want to bring to your attention. The first one that is in your packet, and there's no actions that we require, this month, we'll bring it back in June. But there's a draft budget timeline, and you can paint this together. Basically, this starts to share that as soon as we complete the budget, we're already starting.
We were joking about that earlier, we're saying, he just got done with it.
It doesn't stop, so.
We, yeah, we were laughing about the same thing. It's like one month, we're free even.
Yeah.
It's right into.
But it is job security, right?
But just some dates, just so you're aware of how this is gonna map out. Obviously, we do our levy in September. So prior to that, in August, we'll be looking to have a review into those key assumptions that we believe of where everything is. And then being able to get some direction so staff can begin building their worksheets. September's the levy. And then we'll have back to the board prior to the holidays, kind of what we believe to be the best draft budget that we have. And then in January, you'll approve the preliminary budget. We are moving, then we have to create enough time for the public hearing to happen in February. So we wrap that. The November date though, you'll note, and we'll pass the agenda for the year. In the past several years, we've moved up the dates of our meeting to accommodate things getting holidayed and decorated. So this is the dates for that to occur. And then final budget approval in, in February and then off to the county again. So look at the dates.
This is very nice, you just drop on it. Yeah.
That's where we're at. So we'll bring this formally adopted, but if you see anything that's like, oh my goodness, this is following the same basically cadence that we've got. So that's one. Then other items that basically got a request, obviously at the federal level, funding and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they're funding, they're looking with the Refuge to have the Land Water Conservation Fund, funding that would come out of the fiscal year 2025 budget to use that to acquire property from interested and willing sellers. Now, we know the Tamrec Farm Area acreage that was acquired is being held by private land. The goal is that the federal government will come in and then, of course, transfer the property through that acquisition. So they are asking for a written letter of no objection for those funds to be used for the project. And so I will add if it's okay with the board on the agenda Tuesday night as they do need that response back to the board. That is in alignment of us supporting that initiative as part of our MOU with the Act of Attack. And again, the no objection is with the caveat of it's interested in willing sellers. So that's that one. And then just to the board, while I've got you, since things are happening, we've got Hype with Mike this Saturday, 10 a.m. at Rush Creek. We also have going on at the District Migrant migratory per day with Fish and Wildlife at the Lost Valley Visitor Center in Shaw Park. Have those from 10 a.m. to 2. And, and then we've got, just to mark your calendars, we'll get this out. The first Friday concerts start June, on June 6th at Lost Valley Visitor Center. They're very popular, 7 to 8, 30 p.m. And then tickets for the Great Outdoor Beer Trail, so mark your calendars on that. June 7th is the date, 8 a.m. in the morning, right? They go live and they sell out. So yeah, you gotta be probably watching and, how fast are you at this year?
VIPs are usually on a day or two.
Yeah, those will be sold out. And then Find Your Wild goes live on May 24th as well, and a lot of excitement in that regard. And open off the auction of surplus items that also will go live on 27th. And so listing of those things, the board has already advanced those items that are.
There's quite a few on the auction this year.
Fifty, well, 50 is more than I originally thought.
Yeah.
Buy him for what you know, and then all of a sudden, things start showing up and, okay, we're gonna get rid of that too.
Yeah.
And we're gonna give Ben the shout out next week on Tuesday, but since he's here, I wanna congratulate Ben on his promotion and that.
And you've been with us how long?
I started as a seasonal in 1984, so yeah, full time since 99.
Great.
Thank you for all you've done. Thanks for having me around.
And that, and that is all I have. And then the other piece that I guess did today, and I know you don't have, I mean, you wanna talk about P and D, but trustee appointment, so I'll highlight it.
Sure, so there was six really qualified candidates that came out. At the very end, it was two that stuck out to us. Number five, number six, and ultimately, number one. Five is a farmer, and on the board, four, John Henny. Number six is very talented, very someone to keep an eye on.
Yeah, hopefully.
She can be a part of somewhere or somehow.
Yeah, somebody new to the county too.
And somebody new, yeah, yeah. It was.
I mentioned her to the foundation.
That's what she's knowledge, she's been born on the.
I don't know about born, but she, I mean, she's just very, very sharp.
And it was very, having those people on the board that for 20 years and like, never had this kind of bait.
Yeah, there's been times when we struggled to find anybody.
Yeah, and they have six women and six wildlife. They were, they were very, very interesting. So those two guys that wanna be a part of your group.
Very qualified.
Yeah.
So is it final now, is it, is it called?
Mr. Beeler this morning in our meeting did say he is one. So it seems like it is, that's why.
Right, because before, they had posted the agenda and it wasn't identified as it yet. So today after the meeting, it's based on.
Yeah, reputation.
So that's there. So as normal practice on Tuesday, once that's finalized, any other meetings after our meeting, then I send out invitations and I'll send them to John, inviting him to meeting. And then we'll knock on invitation and, and believe it or not, a lot's changed since he left them. I mean, just our technology and how we do things, it's, it's a mighty intensive, it's all stick.
It's been going on for three years, over three years, yeah.
The other thing I just wanted to pay attention to is, is, but as you know, for just another cost effectiveness that the district did and shot into our marketing plan. But we've reduced the size of the landscapes, right? And so it's shorter, but we also are no longer mailing to non-residents. So non-residents, they got a notice that says the description, you know, we're no longer gonna be mailing to them because they can get it online. We have an online version that they can get access to if they didn't get a postcard.
I think that's a great idea.
And then invitations are going out. We sent you for the meeting, the sneak peek that we're doing with the Board, Academy Board and Foundation, but then also. uh, that we're doing with the Board, County Board and Foundation, but then also doing cutting at Lake Atwood, um, so invitations, you've got some of these in your area, please, if you need more, to hand out to individuals, but we've sent it to our legislators, um, state, federal, um, county board, um, the local, Village Akiri, um, our partners that we, or D and R Director, um, as well, since we have two ID and R grants that this project, uh, is the result, so, yeah, it's the date, and are we having a celebration? Excellent. Nice, good to cut. Oh, wow.
Say that, what was your question?
I said, who's cutting the ribbon, she's on the board.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Big scissors.
Yeah.
Got them.
All right, so was that it then?
That's all.
Okay, so there was a lot in the lot, so, great, thank you. Uh, we'll go to nine point oh, public comments number two.
I don't see.
Would that couple that was here then left?
Yeah, so they communicated to the district, and they're interested in information, public information about pipeline or neighbors down in the southern valley. They were just concerned about the storms, say, it's previous storm damage.
Gotcha.
That's why they, that's why they, I said that we'd be in touch and provide any information.
Good, good, and it's hoping we didn't, we talked this, I have to leave, yeah.
No.
The weather. Yeah, yeah.
If you're in charge of that.
I'm not in charge much. Good, all right, so we'll move on, I guess, uh, let's wrap things up. And to go to motion, go to executive session.
Motion to go into executive session pursuant to two C five, purchase of real estate and two C two one, review of call session minutes. Meeting Zach five on I S P S one twenty slash one, that's check.
Hey, it's the move in second, yeah, second. I, I need seconds.
Treasures Zimmerman?
Yes.
Tracy Dollar?
Yes.
Tracy Lahey?
Yes.
Tracy Durick?
Yes.
Tracy, uh, Treasure, I'm sorry, Secretary Rizorik, I'll get it out.
Yes.
Vice President Everard?
Yes.
And President Dom?
Yes.
All right, there's no action after executive session, though we will come back into them. And we'll see you on the other side.
Thank you for all coming.
Thank you, ladies.
You guys, yeah.
I need a motion to.
I need you to roll.
Coming back in?
Yeah, President Dom?
Here.
Vice President Everard?
Here.
President Zimmerman?
President.
Secretary Rizorik?
Here.
Tracy Lahey?
Here.
Tracy Durick?
Here.
And Tracy Dollar?
Here.
And the board.
Now I need a motion to move to adjourn.
Second.
Basically, move in seconded.
Tracy Lahey?
Yes.
Tracy Dollar?
Yes.
Tracy Durick?
Yes.
Secretary Rizorik?
Yes.
Vice President Everard?
Yes.
Treasures Zimmerman?
Yes.
President Dom?
Yes. I will adjourn.